We'll call the meeting to order of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission, January the 27th, 2025. As they want, please stand at this time. We'll have our prayer and pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask that we'll have County Chairman, Jeff Phillips, to give that for us this morning.
Out with me, please. Father Lord, we're thankful for this day. We're also thankful for the many, many blessings of life. God, we ask that you be with this committee as we look at the needs and the desires of this county, and may we make the decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of this county. We ask that you be with those who are less fortunate than us. We ask you to be with those that are sick and need your help. Ask also that you be with... Serve our country, whether in the military or whether in civil service. Ask all this in Christ's name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We'll now have the roll call and determination of quorum. Madam Secretary.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Michael Shirley.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Moving to item four, selection of a chair and vice chair for calendar year 2025, and I'll call on Commissioner Jim Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have met, Mr. Phillips, Ms. P. and I, and we have unanimously nominated that we continue on like we have with you as chair, and we look forward to Mr. Lee Bogel as vice chair.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second. Favor say aye. Those opposed. Well, I appreciate that. We'll do our best to follow the direction of this commission, and I've always said that. I have people come to me a lot of times on different projects around here, and I'll tell them, I said, "We will do what the commission says." That's how we operate here at the Planning Commission. This is a group, and these are group decisions that are made, and that's how we operate things that are important to the people of this county. Moving forward with the approval of our minutes, and I believe we have January the 13th minutes, and I'll ask that I go to our vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to echo what you were saying as well, and thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Rutherford County in this capacity and on this commission. The meeting minutes for the January 13th meeting are in good order, and therefore I make a motion to approve.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, minutes have been approved. Public comments?
No, sir. No, someone signed up for... Nobody signed up for public comments.
We have no public comments. Items withdrawn or deferred.
Yes, Miss Chairman, thank you. The agenda you have before you is revised. You'll recall that the original agenda we sent out had a preliminary plan for Burgess Falls. That was taken off the agenda last week, so this agenda does reflect that, but everything else on here is still on the agenda.
Okay, sir. Thank you. We'll then move right into our new business. Items eight and A submitted for final plat approval. Item one, Bruce Highway 70E subdivision 24-2111, one lot on 2.5 acres. .5 acres, zone RM, located along John Bragg Highway. Donald L. Bruce, living trust is the applicant, includes a waiver for a non-billable lot. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good morning, everybody. As you stated, the applicant is proposing to divide about two and a half acres off of the parent tract. This property probably looks familiar to the commission. This actually, the entire tract came before the commission at some point mid-last year for potential rezoning, which ultimately was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. What the applicant's proposing to do now, again, is to subdivide about two and a half acres off of the parent tract. The properties are still zoned for residential purposes. We have met with a potential applicant looking at the two and a half acres for a possible rezoning application, but nothing has been submitted to staff at this point. It was suggested at that time that it might be more appropriate to wait until a potential application for rezoning was considered before splitting the property, but the applicant wanted to proceed with things the way that they are. There are no identified soil sites on this property, so that's the reason for the non-billable lot waiver that the applicant is asking for. The applicant does understand that if septic soils are required for any future development that they would need to do an amendment plat. That plat would more than likely not have to come back before the Planning Commission as that would be the only waiver necessary, and if there were soils on there, we could just do it as an amendment plat at that time. So the applicant is present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Messengers, any questions for staff?
Said you had met with potential person going to use the two and a half acres. Did they indicate what that might be?
It was going to be for, like, mulch gravel storage, that kind of thing, but again, nothing's been actually submitted yet.
Thank you. Ask that the applicant come forward at this time if they'd like to... Questions for the applicant, or if the applicant would like to make any statements at this time. Morning, Mr. Bruce.
I'm Don Bruce. I'm the applicant. I've applied for something on this lot last year. Storage, and it's turned down. I've got a fellow now that runs a bunch of gravel yarders in mulch, sand, stuff like that in three different cities, and he would like to use it for another yard. And he don't need a septic tank, or a bathroom, or an office. It's just strictly for high-type storage.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? Kind of make a comment? Just kind of following up on the comments, Mr. Bruce, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on something. Regardless of what happens with this plat today, even if you do recommend approval of the plat with the waiver, that doesn't allow the use that he was just discussing, okay? That would still have to go through the zoning process. This also doesn't give any kind of preapproval for any kind of a zoning application coming through. Just because he gets a waiver on a plat, the applicant shouldn't take that to mean that any zoning application's going to be looked at favorably by the Planning Commission because that's a whole different set of evaluation criteria we look at when it comes to rezonings versus plats. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Okay, commissioners, further discussion? Questions or a motion?
Doug, you mentioned that staff is recommending approval...
No, I think what I was saying, yeah, we didn't really make a recommendation on this. What I'm saying is, even if this is approved by the Planning Commission, he was discussing the use in a little bit more detail, that even if you approve the plat and he records it, that doesn't give him the ability to use the property in the way he was discussing. That would have to go through the zoning process. So in the event that, let's say, for the sake of argument, let's just say the plat's approved, he records it, then he submits, or the applicant submits a zoning request. Let's say the zoning request is denied. The plat still is what it is at that point. He just has a piece of property. It's two and a half acres without a soil site, and so if he ever wanted to do anything with it residentially, he would have to identify some soils on the property. I get that ultimately is what I'm trying to say. Approval of plat doesn't mean you've got approval of the zoning.
Mr. Shirley.
Doug, he would be able to sell that by itself.
Yes, absolutely.
So as far as, if he were to do that, does the state dictate tying into John Bragg Highway for the ingress?
Yes, sir. Any kind of ingress egress, regardless if it's residential or commercial, he would have to work with T.DOT on that.
I can't think of any drawbacks, maybe because I'm the newest guy here, but from or next to the newest guy here. What would be the drawbacks if it's approved? If we approve it?
The drawbacks for who, I guess? For the...
For us, yeah.
I mean, I think that's kind of where my comments were going a little earlier. I don't want them thinking that just because a plat's approved that that somehow indicates the direction the Planning Commission's going to lean for a zoning application, so the applicant just needs to be clear of that. I mean, the only thing that I can see that would have to happen, even if the zoning is not approved, if a zoning application is made is not approved, that they would have to identify septic soils on the property before any kind of a building permit would be issued for a home or anything like that. They would have to get soils. There is the ability to do an accessory storage structure before a principal structure's on the property if they can't find soils, but that would have to be for personal use. So if somebody wanted to buy it and put like a garage on the property to store their own personal materials, cars, whatever, that's something they could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for, but, you know, that's really more on the process side of things, you know? Just approving this in and of itself, I don't think necessarily hurts us any.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we approve it based on, including staff comments.
Motion to approve. Second, discussion.
One more question. Doug, the property, if I'm looking at it right on the map, it does not currently have access to John Bragg Highway, correct?
There looks like a remnant driveway in this location. That was probably just an access point right here.
Okay. I know that segment of roadway's controlled access, and the only reason I bring that up is should the plat include an access easement back to Woodbury Highway? Because that looks like the only access that's being used at this point, and if it is, I wouldn't want to put the property owner in a bind making an assumption they're going to automatically get an access to John Bragg if that's not possible.
Sure. I mean, I think that's something we can work with the applicant about. Of course, something that I would want to make sure we avoid in the future is if this property is rezoned, I don't... And I think that was one of the big issues in that zoning case, was that nobody really wanted to see any kind of access on the Woodbury Pike, any kind of non-residential traffic from the property. That would be my only hesitation with that.
And then if it is further down the road rezoned for the use that was described, then how does that work? If access is not granted to John Bragg, then you have a commercial-style entrance from Woodbury Highway through a private easement onto a... It just seems like it could get very complicated very quickly.
It could get kind of icky, yeah. Yes, it could. You know, obviously, they would need to work with T.DOT, probably even before they make any kind of an application, to find out whether or not they could even get the access. I mean, my understanding with the state is, and with just access in general, that they have to have access somewhere now if the state's going to dictate that, like you said, because it is a state road, but you're right. That would probably be something that would need to be worked out, I would say, prior to any kind of a zoning application being brought in.
I would say before any zoning application to get that squared away first, because that could get...
Yeah, I would agree. That could get icky real fast, as far as that goes.
Yes, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Michael Shirley.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to carry. Move now into item B, submitted for site plan approval. Number one, True Gospel Church reapproval, 193051, construction of approximately 3,865 square foot of a community assembly space, religious use on 3.62 acres. Zone RM, located along East Jefferson Pike. True Gospel Missionary Baptist Church is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. We've seen this site plan a few times over the years, originally back in 2015, and then also in 2019. Construction never began after either approval, so the site plan had expired since they're only valid for 18 months, so they are asking for reapproval for this. This was deferred as well by the Planning Commission back in October of this year in order to coordinate access on the West Jefferson Pike with T.DOT. There was also a request for a building floor plan so that building codes and the fire marshal's office could determine the overall occupancy of the building. We do have that information now. The applicant is also, and their design team is also, met with T.DOT, and T.DOT has found the proposed access to be acceptable, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, with no addition of any kind of traffic improvements or anything like that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
There's a few tweaking that needs to go along with their plan about the proper pavement and other items that T.DOT is requesting, but other than that, it's in good order.
So beyond that, I think that we've got everything we need here, and we feel that this site plan's ready for approval. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Session or a motion?
A move to approve. With staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? Have a second. Further discussion? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Michael Shirley.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Carry. Moving to item two, shovelville Pike dealership approval, reapproval, 21306, construction of 20,000 square feet of sales and office and shop space for a car dealership. Zone CG, located at 4372 Shovelville Pike. Al Zabet is... Nasser Fazal is the applicant. Last approved was March 22, 2021. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property was rezoned to commercial general by the Board of Commissioners back in December of 2020. The site plan is for the contemplated use, which was a motor vehicle sales establishment, car sales. The existing office building will remain. Two additional buildings are also being proposed. The subject site plan was originally approved by the commission back, the Planning Commission, back in March of 2021. The applicant has obtained land disturbance permits and has begun grading activities, but no building permits have been issued, so the site plan has expired. The plan appears to be mostly unchanged. The buildings have been shifted slightly, but they've remained the same size. There's also a few less, fewer parking... Sorry, I can't talk this morning. There are fewer, seven fewer parking spots than originally proposed, but the reason for that change seems to be the location of the septic soil in the back, just not to interfere with that. So with that, the plan appears to be in good order, best as we can tell, and we're ready to move forward with it and for a building permit, so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Pocketed this morning. Can you notice that? Questions for the applicant?
And just an FYI, we did make sure that the car carriers, delivery vehicles can get in and out and not park on the shoulder. That's a big no-no for us.
And for T.DOT, too, I think.
And T.DOT, yes.
There are no questions or further discussion? I'll accept a motion. Prove with staff comments. Prove with staff comments. And a second. Further discussion?
Jim Everwater. Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Michael Shirley.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried. Item three, Blackman Baptist Church Building Addition 243021, construction of 6,320 square foot building addition, parking area for medium community assembly, use on 6.02 acres. Zone RM, located at 390 Brinkley Road. Blackman Baptist Church is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to build an approximately 6,300 square foot building to the existing church building on the property. Phase one will be for the building. Phase two would be for a connector between the two. The applicant is proposing to add about 54 parking spaces. Since some of the existing spaces are being lost, however, due to the expansion, the new amount of, the new, the amount of new spaces would result in a net increase of about 44. Most of our comments have been addressed. Hopefully, those that remain, I mean, best that we can tell, were pretty much housekeeping. Mike, I'm going to turn it over to you. I know you had some drainage concerns. I think that was most of the leftover comments that we had, so.
Right. They've addressed most of our comments, but nothing too major that can't be worked out, just fine tuning. There were a few comments that they need to address for the fire marshal about emergency lanes, and I don't know. I'll throw it over to Josh, and you can kind of explain what you're looking for.
Just due to the close clearance that they've established through here on their new apparatus access around the proposed building extension, we've talked with their, I believe it's Hudson Steel, is that correct? Yeah, we've talked with Hudson Steel. They're directing what we want. They're just going to put some fire lane delineation on the west side and north side of the building where that access road comes around. So they're all good with it. We're good with it, so no issues here.
Questions? Staff or the applicant?
Motion to approve, Commissioner.
Motion to approve. Second. Further discussion? Favor say aye. Those opposed? It is. Moving to item four, Rogers Group Incorporated, 243022, construction of 13,450 square feet of heavy industrial uses, concrete batch plant, asphalt plant, quarry shop, along with accessory structures on 107.2 acres. Zone plan unit development, PUD, located along Burtonob Road. Rogers Group Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Rogers Group, as you stated, is proposing plant expansion in three phases. Phase one is going to be the addition of a concrete plant. Phase two will be for a quarry shop, which will be used for vehicle and plant maintenance, and then phase three would be the addition of an asphalt plant. The overall master plan shows the location for all these improvements, which is included in the plan set. There's also turn lane improvements being proposed along Burtonob Road at the main entrance to the plant. Most of our comments have been addressed. We've been going back and forth with them over the last several weeks, trying to get this into good shape, and I think we're pretty much there. Again, I'm going to turn it over to our engineer, Mike Hughes. I know he's got some, wants to discuss some concerns with the drainage and how they address those as well. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Douglas. They have been working with us on the drainage. They are proposing to put in a stormwater management area along the front here with phase one. They will be widening their main driveway coming into the site, and it'll be, just as you're looking at the driveway, it'll be to the right of the site. They are putting in turn lanes with phase one, and I'll go to that page. It's all showing all three phases, how they'll work together. They will need to work with the neighbor across the street. They are calling out a slope easement. I don't think it's on this page, that they will have to acquire from mulch facility across the street. They are proposing... The right set. There we go. They are proposing turn lanes, right turn lanes and left turn lanes on Burtonob Road. Here we go. So they are adding in a decel right turn lane to allow the trucks to come in and out, and this is the widened entrance that I was talking about, going back to their facility. They will be striping, adding left and right dedicated turn lanes coming out of the site, but also, like I said, a decel right turn lane and a left turn lane heading eastbound on Burtonob Road. They are putting in a opposing left turn lane for the mulch facility, but they, like I said, they'll need to work with them. They are, because of the turn lane additions, they are going to get into their property and need to... They're calling for a slope easement, but that might need to be a right-of-way purchase, but we'll work with the highway department on that. Other than that, they're mostly good order. Like Douglas said, there is some tweaking to the drainage that we need to do. There are some upsizing of driveway culverts. We always ask that they look at the next two downstream drainage structures. Here's the pond that I was talking about, and once it's released, we have them evaluate the next two drainage structures, and they will need to upsize those to make that drainage work. And then there's a cross drain here that will, that the water heads south once it leaves these two driveways. But all that to be said, it's, plans are in fairly good order, just some minor tweaking to go. And this will be in three phases. Sorry, this is a large set of plans. So like Douglas said, their first phase would include the asphalt plant, concrete plant, sorry, concrete plant, and then phase two would have a shop. The heavy equipment would come back through the main site, and this is just for access to the shop for the workers and supplies, but the heavy equipment would come through the site itself, is what we've been told. We will need to work with the highway department on making improvements down here. Phase two, Leonard Hudson Road. There is a small portion of Leonard Hudson that is in the road book that the county oversees, so we will need to work with the highway department on that. Final piece would be that third phase back here, and that one is the asphalt plant. Okay.
Okay. Commissioners?
Question. The plans that we have on our iPads only show a right turn lane, so phase one will include a left turn and right turn and to be built simultaneously, or what's the timing?
They would be built simultaneously.
Okay, then what about the phase two access? Is there, what's planned there as far as road improvements?
Right. The phase two, they are, they're not doing anything on Burtonob, but they are making improvements to Leonard Hudson. They, we've been told that it's just for employee access, the few employees that'll be working there, and pickup trucks to deliver supplies.
But you said... But you said heavy equipment repairs. Can it accommodate semi's pulling in? I know it's not as regular, the volume's not very high, but can the turning templates be verified just to make sure that?
Yes, so the heavy equipment would come back from this internal driveway here in the, in the back. We've been told that no heavy equipment will be coming through Leonard Hudson. It'll just be small pickup trucks and employees.
Remain internal to the site then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Doug, the notes say that this is 107.2 acres. Is, is 107 acres being impacted or is that the total?
I think that's just the total of the site in general. That's not, I mean, areas that they're looking at, I mean, obviously they're not disturbing that much. It's just if you were to take the, the area of the three lots that are being impacted, that's what you would get, total area.
What, what activity is happening to the east of this phase two and phase three? Or I'm sorry, phase one and phase three property?
Yeah, Hamilton and Moore properties, they're the ones that own the, there's a couple things. There's that, they're the ones that own the Mulch and Moore across the street. They rezoned some of that property, all the expense in a few years now. And they use it as part of their business. There's a little track right there, yeah, that Mike's highlighting right in that area. That's actually a site plan that we've been looking at. Hopefully will be before you, not too distant future, Hunter Brothers, where he's looking to do, it's also zoned industrially. And he's looking to have that as like a storage area for vehicles and material and things.
They jumped the gun on that one a little bit and we had to put a stop to them.
Right.
Okay, so, so the property above that then, to, to the east of the property we're talking about, move your cursor over to my right.
Back this way?
No, I'm sorry, the other way. There you go. What, that's, is that just raw land right now?
Yes, yes, I believe. But I believe that's.
Is that owned by Rogers Group or is that?
No, I believe that's part of the Hamilton and Moore property, if I remember right.
Okay, so there, there is no residential anywhere to the east of that?
Not, well, immediately adjacent to it for the most part, no.
I think there is one, but it's a rental, is what I've been told. And I think Hamilton and Moore.
You turn on the county zoning?
County zoning?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And while you're.
Yeah, that is zoned industrially too, so.
While you're looking at that, I have a question for Tanya. I, I know, because this is the line of work I'm in, I know a concrete batching plant will create a lot of dust. And there are all kinds of things you can do to control that, but ultimately there will be a lot of dust in the air. Tanya, have, has Rogers Group had many complaints on dust control? Or are they doing a pretty good job of their current dust control?
Yes, Commissioner, we haven't had any complaints on Rogers Group in the last seven, eight years.
Okay.
And I believe there's someone here from Rogers Group, if you would like to have them speak.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was not a heavy residential on that side there that could be impacted by dust. But it appears it's pretty raw land and it will be ultimately industrial zoned anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Erna, did, did we look at traffic study at all for the increase of truck traffic heading towards Ammerville Road?
Well, the, when this came through the commission a few years ago for rezoning, there was a lot of discussion on that regarding the improvements that are needed at the intersection of Burtonob Road. It was also discussed at that time that with the addition of some of these expansion elements that they're looking at, that it's going to be, the amount of traffic in and of itself may not be expanding all that much because rather than the concrete trucks coming to pick up material and then leaving, they're just going to be handling everything on site because the batch plant is there. So, I mean, do we look at traffic? Now that we look at it all the way back to Ammerville Road, I don't think it went that far. But I would say most of the traffic here, and again, I could be corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe most of the traffic here probably heads back toward Murphy's Borough to hit the 840 interchange there off of veterans, so.
Chairman, I'm not sure, we're talking about phase one, right?
Well, they're looking at all of them, but, I mean, phase one would be obviously the first one that they'd be constructing, but they want approval for all three phases.
So we're not just talking about approval for phase one, we're talking about everything?
Correct.
Kind of follow up on what Michael was asking a minute ago about additional truck traffic. What they're proposing in addition to what's already there? The operation of the quarry will continue pretty much the way that it is?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Oh, we are talking about additional traffic. Is there any, any reason to question that heavy truck traffic on county roads? Question the, what might happen to that heavy traffic on county roads? They pay an additional something for those roads? I know, I know it's, in some places, like garbage trucks and things pay an license to use roads. I'm just concerned long-term about the conditions of roads with those heavy type of trucks on there. Type of, of consideration we should give for what those, that additional trucks that are really heavy trucks?
Typically what we require with any new access point is a road connection performance agreement. So say somebody wants to put a new driveway out onto Burtonob, Burtonob Road, we would work with the highway department to establish a road connection and performance agreement. So, and also we look at it during our site plan approval. But typically, if there are other improvements, like these turn lanes here, we will hold a surety in place, needing, saying that we'll hold on to this surety and make sure that it's constructed to county standards and, and, because that's where all of the damage happens, is that those turning movements, the straight line movements, you know, it does wear on the road. But typically you cannot limit the, the weight of a truck unless it's a bridge or something like that. So we do look at, you know, intersection improvements, needed road improvements, but there are only a limited amount of things that we can ask for.
Not so much as a planning commissioner, but as a county commissioner, type of comments that we get are trucks tearing up the roads and those kind of things. And my question was, is there any options that the county? Also, if I'm not mistaken, hours of operations on quarry set, are there hours of operations considered for this building?
I don't think there's anything specific, because I remember the zoning, there was no specific time parameter set. Now, like I said, there is someone here from Rogers Group, I believe they could answer questions on that regard, but I'm not familiar with any.
But yes, I'd say a lot of their requirements are from the mine safety, OSHA, IMSA, the mine version of OSHA, of what they can and can't do. And then also talking about fees, the severance tax, you know, when they remove stone from the quarry, they're paying the county additional fees.
Bogle?
I know back during the rezoning application and the discussion, that was part of my concern. I know it was stated that they do, are going to conduct a lot of operations internal as far as the concrete batching plant and the asphalt plant, having those aggregates right there close and on site. But yet, the quarry is generating traffic, the concrete plant will generate traffic in the ingress, egress of concrete trucks and whatever supplies they don't have on site, like Portland cement or some of those. The asphalt plant, of course, a lot of the state paving is done at nighttime. So you're talking about 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, which is going to be a lot of traffic that'll be running through the night. And those are some of the concerns I had. And then also the truck traffic, because with those, with an asphalt plant, a concrete batching plant and the quarry, they are going to ultimately increase significantly the impact on the roadway and the traffic. So those were some of my concerns, but I mean, we're where we are now, so I'm glad to see that they're at least doing, putting in some turn lanes. I know they'll be built to handle their traffic and, but I am concerned about the impacts up and down that roadway. And I know that's heavy industrial and those areas are light industrial as well, but with nighttime paving, that's going to be a lot more traffic that you normally do not have on that roadway that's associated with a quarry. So just, those were some of my concerns that I still have.
Right, and I, and I remember you voicing those originally. Again, we're just, when we met with them originally on this about the amount of traffic, yeah, and over time will increase probably so, but I know a lot of it was going to be still internal to the site, whereas some trips that were originally coming for one purpose, they're still going to be there, but they're, it's, a lot of it's being handled on site as opposed to that extra traffic.
Mister, you brought up these questions, and I only think it's fair that we give representative from Rogers to answer your question. Someone from Rogers would like to come forward this time? Questions, I'll, I'll them to do so.
Morning Chairman Reed and members of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I have Mr. Nick Di Bartolo with me today with Rogers Group. I want to address the traffic first and then he can answer any other questions you have. We did do a full-blown traffic study and we did take into account all the external trips that will be going onto the county network. I don't get to correct my friend Doug very often, but I'm going to correct him this time. We did look at Ammerville Road also and analyze those impacts as well. Turn it over to Mr. Di Bartolo.
Yeah, to address some of the questions I think that Mr. Bogle has, he is correct that a lot of the DOT operations are going to be required to be done at night. So there will be some amount of truck traffic that will occur at night. Net-net, the, I can't predict the future in terms of what the increase in the DOT load will look like. But for the most part, the increase in truck traffic would be, to your point, Lee, is Portland cement and asphalt cement going into, in order to use our aggregates to make those materials at the concrete and asphalt plant. The net amount of dump trucks, at least initially, in probably the first few years, unless there's a large ramp up of DOT work, there will actually be less dump trucks that leave the site. The material will leave the concrete plant in ready mixers and then when asphalt plant will leave in dump trucks as well, but. At less dump trucks, but there will be a few more Portland cement and asphalt cement. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you guys have about phasing or anything elsewhere.
I do believe beyond a shadow of doubt that the service that you're providing is needed in the community beyond a shadow of a doubt. Can you answer the question about hours of operation?
Yeah. Generally during the day, everything will be, most of our employees show up between 5:30 and 6:00. Dump trucks start leaving the site between 6:00 and 6:30. Most of the aggregate production last loads are usually between 4:00 and 4:30 in the afternoon. When we do have night operations, which won't be all the time, most of those jobs are restricted to usually at market 8:00 to 5:00. So 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So trucks would probably be leaving right around that 8 o'clock hour with the last load probably around 3:00, 3:30. Traffic control, so generally those jobs, I mean, we can get 14, 1500 tons a night. So, you know, divide that out by, you know, 22 and a half tons a truck would be roughly the amount of haul units that would leave the asphalt plant. And the volume that would leave the asphalt plant would generally be more than what the concrete plant.
I have a question for you, just about traffic. The, if you're turning, turning right and headed towards Ammerville Road is more residential than turning left, for sure. Is there any assurances or anything that we could do to, especially at those nighttime traffic, to limit the amount of trips that are turning that direction?
I can't speak specifically for where the work will come in the future. I mean, obviously if there's a night job over, you know, that's, that's close to that part, we'll want to turn right over there. But I would say that probably 90-plus percent of the total traffic out of here is going to turn left out of the quarry and head back to veterans.
And this is a vital service, I agree. I mean, it's something that's very much needed and, but I do understand the significance of the operation because operating as a quarry now is a lot of trucks in and out. But adding a concrete plant, adding an asphalt plant, at times there's going to be quite a bit of traffic as far as moving those materials to the job site. So just, that's my concern. I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure that we all understand that there's going to be a significant, even though a lot of operations are internal, there's still going to be a lot of significant impact to the roadway that's not there now. I don't know what percentage increase that would be. It depends on the jobs, it depends on what's, there's no way to really get a good number.
Yeah.
But we all know there's going to be an increase and that's what I'm concerned about.
The biggest increase that I could potentially see, and that's the reason that we're moving for the asphalt plant, is obviously we got the choice lanes coming up from Murphy's Borough to Nashville. I don't think any one quarry operator or one paving contractor is going to be able to handle the volume on that job. So I think everybody's going to get a piece of the pie. A fair amount of that work actually will be done during the day, though. So, but that would be where the biggest increase. And I don't think you would see really much to any material move until probably the year 2028. I know commercial late this year, but commencement probably won't start till sometime in '27 and there will be a lot of maintenance and traffic and earth moving activities that have to occur before then.
I appreciate you, you all coming and showing us all the phases now and so we can plan this together. So it's, it's as minimal impact to the community as we can. We know this is industrial area, but still it quickly gets into residential, as we all know, so appreciate it.
And what a testimony you got just from Tanya's report. Eight years, seven years without any complaints, that speaks the volumes for your business and nasty.
They go through extensive efforts to make sure that we control the dust as best we can, so.
Here's questions I had. Right now, you just strictly rocket this site and you're going to take on asphalt and concrete? And you mentioned phase one, two, and three. What's the timing to reach that final on phase three?
Phase one, the concrete producer that we're currently talking to would like us to get them in there as fast as possible. So as soon as we can get going on the road improvements, obviously we have to have that done before we can commission them. So I would hope that we're up and running by this fall with concrete, followed immediately thereafter by the new shop. And again, that is right off of Leonard Hudson, it will only be employee vehicles coming through there. Any kind of deliveries that are required that are using a heavy haul truck like a tractor trailer will come through the quarry entrance and then come through the quarry. Asphalt plant, I would like to have commissioned and making material by the spring of 2027.
Have, have we met, and this might be a question for, but has you all or the county planning met with the highway department about concerns that Greg may have off-site intersections and things? I look at this turn lane and I appreciate all the improvements in front of your site. I am concerned about some of the other intersections.
We did, we, we've met with the county and again, we've analyzed Ammerville Road and Burtonob Road as the nearest bigger intersection and, and yes, we've addressed that.
Other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mister? Questions or back on motion?
Questions or back a motion?
Mr. Chair, recognizing the need for a plant somewhere near the interstate system to help build these roads and finally do something about our traffic to Nashville, and I do feel like that this one being so close to the interstate and get that, get those trucks off onto the interstate as quickly as possible, I'm going to make a motion to Subject to staff comments, thank you.
Sure, I have a second, have a second for the, for the comments or discussion. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Jim Averwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Pettus Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Staff reports and other business, Mr. Lawson?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm going to, I don't have anything specific. Obviously, we know about the work session that'll happen, we'll adjourn this regular meeting, and then we'll take a few minutes to get everything set up for the work session, but before we do that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, I think he's got an announcement he wants to make.
Okay. We're happy to announce we have a new hire, a, another assistant county engineer, and his name is Jared Bonner, he's sitting in the audience, worked many years with TDOT, and we're excited about him bringing that knowledge to the county with, to help us. And he will be over new construction projects in the county, new subdivisions, new roads, and things like that. And we're trying to be more efficient and provide a better service to the residence and development community. So, welcome, Jared, when you see him.
Glad to have him on board. Had a commissioner that would like to make an announcement as well, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Chip Pinion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bible says, "Over in Ecclesiastes, for everything there is a season," and it's been a privilege and an honor to be able to serve on this commission for the last 16 years, roughly. I can remember the day, 2009, Craig Lynch, longtime commissioner, Jeff, you know very well, a lot of you do here, served on this commission proudly, called and said, "Hey, would you be interested in, in serving?" And I said, "Well, tell me a little bit about it." So, we went through the discussion. The next day, I got a call from then-Mayor Burgess, would ask him my interest in being part of this commission, and from there, it's actually turned into a meeting with Doug, and then Commissioner Phillips was chairman at the time of the commission. We came and met downstairs, and, you know, the rest is pretty much, you know, history. You know, 16, 16 years later, here, here we still go. First off, I do want to make, you know, an apology to this commission and to Doug, you know, the last two, three years, my involvement has not been what it should have been and not representative of this county that it needs to be. So, with, like everything else, you know, with family and things change, you know, it's, it's time for me to, to move on. You know, again, I appreciate so much the opportunity to be a part. When I started, it was just Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Averwater, and I think you had just come on, Commissioner Kush, so a lot of change is taking place. 16 years seems like yesterday, but at the same time, it's, it's, it's been a long, long time. So, I am tendering my resignation effective today from the Planning Commission, but I'm still call Rutherford County home, will continue to call Rutherford County home. I'm still heavily involved with Consolidated Utility District, serving on the board, working with Jason and Alan. Doug and I had a comment or a conversation a while ago. My goal is to continue to be heavily involved with the county. CED is an integral part of planning and what we're continuing to do, and I look forward to continuing to serve the county, and that role today and in the future. So, again, I appreciate every one of you. It's been, again, a pleasure and an honor, and I thank you for, for just welcoming me to be a part of this commission for 16 years. I had a little bit more hair, Doug, when I first started. I don't think there's any direct correlation, but again, thank you very much for everybody, appreciate it.
Chip, thank you for the years that you've served and what you have done for the county here. We'll, we'll miss you being a part of this, but we totally understand and the time that you've put in. We will adjourn the regional planning commission, and will give us about anywhere between 5 and 10 minutes, and we'll end here for the work session. So, we are adjourned.